We have an archivist that has 12 years of experience. His experience is with record management with the BLM, and we also have an educator too. So, and the important thing is too, we are working very diligently and we wrote a grant and received the grant for our archival process. The other grant that we wrote, we wrote a $285,000 grant for Save America's Treasures on these records. And we didn't get it on the first go around. There is another opportunity and we are reapplying. On the first opportunity, we asked the National Park Service to evaluate our grant and let us know what those weaknesses were. They did. We are addressing those weaknesses and we feel very confident on the next run that that grant will be funded. And part of that funding is to actually put these records in a climate-controlled storage system, which is sorely lacking right now.
The second thing is, I know, I think it was two years ago, there was issues with lawsuits and I was concerned about is there would be no jeopardy if the foundation took over this?
Are you referring to the SNS lawsuit?
There was two. I passed to people in the hall, it was before I was back on the boards, I think it was about two, two and a half years ago, two and a half years ago thereabouts, that there was a mediation meeting that was held here.
Commissioner, I'd like to speak on behalf of the foundation. This is Chris Stanko, if that's okay?
Go ahead.
So, Commissioner Carson?
Yes, I'm, thank you.
Just to follow up on Mark's point, you know, I had heard about this curator issue when deep into Westlaw last night, there was a mention of a curator in Nevada rights statutes over 20 years ago. That was since amended out, at least in 2001, if not earlier. The thorough search of all the Nevada rights statutes, curator is only referenced in statutes relating to trusts. And so, and even within the statutory scheme that governs the state museum system now, the only requirement is for the administrator who's located in Carson City to have two years of public administration experience and a degree in science or history. So that's it. If there's some specific section somehow that I missed and Mr. Pitts wants to reference it now, I'd happy to look it up. But I had heard about this and that's why I talked about it. And so I think that that's a red herring. And again, we have the qualified people at the foundation, 20 employees, curators, archivists, and the like, and are ready and able to manage the artifacts like that. Now, I do manage artifacts.
No.
Again, with respect to litigation, go ahead, sorry.
No, I was gonna say, I was fully satisfied with what Mr. Bassett said.
Thank you.
Okay. With respect to litigation, as a matter of public record, very good news. I also represent the city of Ealing with respect to widely known litigation involving SNS, Shoreline Leaking, and that's the Northern Line of the Nevada Northern Railway. We were a law firm on behalf of both clients after a long time and many years to successfully complete a, we're in escrow now, it hasn't closed, we're very close to closing, it could close next Monday, but a $3.1 million settlement of that lawsuit. And the foundation would be getting $550,000 immediately upfront, so with the city, and we'd be getting another million dollars plus pretty, you know, strong interest payments over the next 21 months. And so, we already have a really good financial position, that's only gonna help it, it's gonna help the city's financial position as well. So, while it hasn't completely closed, we are in escrow, the case is completely stayed, there's no active litigation whatsoever, and we're just waiting for a 30-day period at what's called the Surface Transportation Board to run, and then a couple other small logistical things to happen for that transaction to close and that case completely go away. So, really good news on that front.
Thank you for sharing that, that is good news. Really good news.
Very good news. Okay, we're gonna try to move along with this.
Okay.
Seriously, we've been, this is an item, and we're a divided community. We've heard all these comments in favor of the railroad foundation, but believe me, there has been several that are opposed to it as well. There's two sides to every story. We, I've talked to the DA, we as a commission are allowed to make a decision and make a vote. This is a vote to give support, a letter of support to the railroad foundation and the city of Ealing. This is not a final vote, the final action and everything will go through the legislative process, and they're the ones that'll make the final decision. The decision now comes to this commission, and we're all members of this community and we've all been here for a pretty long, long time. No matter which way we go, we're gonna have some dissension on either side. I have spoken to, I went out on my own, I got the other side of the coin, I've received several calls, emails, and I talked to Senator Gokulchea last night because I was told he was in full support of this going back to the railroad foundation. He is, and he has stated that with one caveat, that chances, there is a chance that some of the archives that are in that building and belong to the state, they belong to the state, and they could be moved elsewhere, out of White Pine County, they will be kept as a record in the museum, but they could be removed if the state chooses to do that because they have the ownership. So Pete is in support of it, and that's a statement that he made. I'm trying to just let all the commissioners know what I have found out, there's two sides to every story, and I think both are very sound. We've gotten 64 letters from people from every walk of life within White Pine County. We know the railroad foundation. This county commission, without question, has been in support of the White Pine County, of the Nevada Northern Railway, many, many ways, millions of dollars through art prioritizing, spent a lot of money for the railroad. We are 100% behind the railroad. This letter of support, if this is the action that's gonna be taken, and I hope it's taken soon, it will be, is, do we want to throw our support behind the Nevada Northern Railway, or do we want the state status quo? We wanna be fair, we wanna be exact. Each one of us, when we make our decision, that's the decision of the commission. It's like every other vote of the commission, whatever the commission votes, that's it. So, whether you're for or against, it will not be held against you the way your vote, that's why you're on the board. You're on the board to make these tough decisions, one way or the other. So as we move forward, without any more debate or anything else, unless one of the commissioners, any commissioner, has something to say on this subject, we're gonna move forward. Excuse me, I'll get to you in a minute. I'd like each commissioner, they'd like to make an opinion? Welcome. That's what we're here for. And we're gonna try to move along with this, and it's just simply a question. Vote your conscience, whatever you think is best for White Pine County, not for any individual or any group or anything. We vote what we think is best. When we go to bed tonight, we'll sleep good. So that being said, George, you had your hand up, you're free to come up and speak before we ask the other commissioners.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The fact that we may lose $300,000 from state money here really bothers me. The other concern I have is we talked about the litigation coming to an end and the railroad is gonna get half of the $3 million. They should not get one dime. There's non-pieces, mis-pieces, non-pieces for non-collection of track fees. It was the city of Ealing that purchased the Northern Line, not the railroad. Their whole focus is that acreage in East Ealing up to, I can't remember which mile marker by McGill, that's it. After that, they're just out there sucking up money and we cannot focus on one item in this community. The railroad is important. I fought for accountability for years, but for them to take half of that settlement, which belongs to the city of Ealing, with the city of Ealing taxpayers that paid for the purchase of that Northern Line, and you gotta remember that. You haven't thought about another entity expanding our tourism, no arena, indoor arena, different factions would come in here which would enhance the railroad. The railroad, the people come and then they go. Again, not that it's not important, it is, but we've gotta diversify and we're not doing it. Do not get rid of that state office, that archive, that curator, all of that. You need a separation. It's being managed well, the only one that has the cloud over it is the historic railroad. I pointed those out to you. You have to provide financial accountability in this community, not favoritism, who you like or who you don't like. Thank you.
I have one more piece of information I found out from one of the original sponsors of the railroad when they started. The reason they went to the state of Nevada back when they first got started to have the museum taken over, they ran out of money. They had no money, they had no resources to run the operation. So they took it upon themselves, they got the wheel going, they got the first step, but without the money, they needed the state's help at that time in 1982. So they went, and that's why the railroad museum, as we're speaking to, was put in the hands of the state museum, which has been running, as far as I know, effectively, but I think that was very pertinent, that's why originally it went back to the state, is because that particular organization was really new and they just didn't have the resources to run the museum. And that's fine. Come on forward, Mr. Pitts.
Chairman, I'd like to please have just 30 seconds.
30 seconds, Mr. Pitts is at the podium.
Okay, so with respect to Senator Gokulchea's comment, this is Chris Stanko. I have the contract here, and the contract states as far as the historical records of everything, it says they shall be permanently housed and displayed in White Pine County, Nevada. So just to correct the facts on that, and we can be in touch with Senator Gokulchea, these records and artifacts cannot pursuant to the contract that was drafted by Mr. David Olson around 30 years ago. He moved out of the state of Nevada, and also with respect to the comment he last made, yes, the state helped 30 years ago, but the question is, what does the future look like and what's been happening the last 10, 15 years, and where are we now? Not where the foundation was 30 years ago.
That's what we're here for. Okay, Mr. Pitts?
So in answer to Mr. Stanko's question, we're continuing to do the educational programming of the state museum, doing exactly what museums do, preserving, protecting, many available to the public, those, the collections that were given to us. As far as the qualifications of staff, invite you to look at state applications in order for you to direct a museum in the state of Nevada, you must have a master's degree, that's a requirement. And archivists and people of that profession are all state, there's a state standard for those archivists. So you can't just claim you are one and be one. And so, the state does hire professional people, the professional standards, they've done that, they continue to do that, they will continue to do that. And then your collection is in the best hands when it's in the hands of somebody that actually went to school, educated, and does this as a professional. The state has that.
Thank you.
Thank you, sorry to take so much of your time.
You're fine. We've done good, we've heard lots of pros and cons on this, and right now, I'd invite any commissioner who would like to speak, speak up, and then we're gonna move forward and then call a vote. So please, Ian, you want something?
I felt like Director Horvath probably had the most eloquent articulation of the situation, and I think he may, but I agree with him.
Yeah, to add to that, I was gonna say the same thing, I kinda feel like Kyle exactly. And, you know, I see both sides pointing fully, but, you know, just in my genetic makeup, you know, if something's moving towards a more private industry than a state industry, I mean, I think that's the way that I'm gonna have to go. Obviously, there seems to be work out, and, you know, I hate that, you know, Mr. Pitts has caught up with this as an employee, and, I mean, I hope that he's able to stay, you know, these kind of things that do concern me are ironed out at the legislature, but, you know, yeah, I'll support this, you know, just like Mr. Horvath, but, you know, it kinda sucks, you know, that there are gonna be, you know, I don't know if collateral damages are the right word, but where there are gonna, you know, be things that need to be worked out with this, but, yeah, that's my comment.
Shane, you got a comment?
You know, I agree with Travis and with Ian both. This has been a good relationship, and at the time it was done 30 years ago, it was a necessary relationship, but, and I think, I think the state has been an excellent steward of the facility down there. But times change and visions change, and I think to, so that we can broaden the scope of our operations and redevelop it, I think it requires it being a single operation and just to create a seamless and cohesive environment so that we can move this forward on a much broader scope.
Lauren?
Yeah, I am, I'll be honest with you, I am torn. This is one thing that I find difficult to find, you know, I can see both sides, and with that, that makes me struggle. I am concerned financially in regards to the railroad. I'm hoping, I've worked in the past to try and get grants when I've been in DC, and I've had conversations with Mark Bassett about that in the past, and hopefully, would maybe it being privatized, that might work better, I don't know. That and just funds, in 10 years, I don't want to have the foundation then turn around and come back to the county or the city, come to the county and, you know, needing help again. I mean, we've worked and supported, and I do support the railroad, I mean, it's huge with our Simplesma grants and wherever we can help. And I, you know, it's whether somebody wants to retire or not, it's not our choice to make that decision, and I feel like that that's what we're doing now, so far as the free employees.
Okay, we've heard from the commissioners, one thing I wanna make perfectly clear to Mr. Stanko, I didn't appreciate his comments about Senator Gokulchea. Pete is 100% behind the railroad. He just put out that little caveat that this could happen. So to almost throw our senator under the bus, I don't appreciate it, period. That's the way it is. I understand what Pete said, I thought I made it perfectly clear, so I'm gonna make that Pete is behind the railroad foundation, but he just wants to make sure it's right. So that being said, and all the other comments that we've had today, we've got a long meeting today, and I'm not pushing this, to just rush it through, I am simply going to ask the commission to make a motion based on Mr. Bybee's agenda item, and from there, we'll take a vote.
As the chairman, I'd make a motion to approve resolution 2020-77.
We have a motion by Shane?
Second.
Second by Ian. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? None, based on what was said today. Thank you all for your time, and have a good day, and again, those that are here, have a Merry Christmas. But a very difficult decision, very difficult thing, but it isn't over. It's going to the state. The state legislature will give us the final decision of exactly what's gonna happen. Thank you all very much. That being said, we're gonna move on, go back to the start of our meeting. I'm sorry to all those who are on timed items that had to wait, but this is just something I felt was important.
Were we supposed to read the letters that were?
No. No. We read them.
Does the public have access to the copies of those letters?
No, but if they wanted, they can attach me.
Okay, so we'll have them on file at the clerk's office, so we can get a record of that, and each commissioner has a copy of the letters as well, and has perused the signatures for the record?
Yes.
And we also told the lawyer, we will give him the copy so he can just look at the names.
They're all gonna be on the record then.
Yes. Okay. All right. Okay, we're gonna go back to page two, we're gonna start the meeting, we've got a lot to do today. Right now, we'll recess the regular county commission meeting, and we'll open the meeting of the White Pine Fire Commission. Item V, it's a nine, oh wait, excuse me, I gotta go to the nine o'clock, I skipped over that. We'll go to item A, we're still in the county commission meeting, by the way. We'll go to item A, it's a nine o'clock, it's Nevada Economic Assessment Project, Presentation for Discussion Only on the Nevada Economic Assessment Project, NEAP, Buddy Borden and Joe Benicki, a UNR cooperative extension. Are you guys on the phone or in person?
Yes, I'm, this is Buddy Borden, I'm in Las Vegas, I'm on video.
Okay.
And this is Joe Benicki also from Las Vegas, also on video.
Thank you, go ahead and proceed.
Okay, do we have any other point on this or not? If not, I'm just gonna run through.
We have backup material on it, but.
We can't get it out.
Okay, very good. Well, I'm just gonna, I'm gonna run through this, I know you guys have a packed meeting, and I have no respect to the time. What we wanted to do is actually alert the commissioners of the county of the program that we have initiated in White Pine, and this is in response to a lot of different issues that actually often come up throughout state and several counties, and it's a program that we are actually working together with not only the university community or land agency community, as well as NACO and US Railroad Development and all those areas. And kind of that centered around the notion of being able to respond or actually understand different types of issues more importantly. I think you guys probably, this is what I was talking about, an issue that often is our challenges faced with, and then with the pandemic, we're gonna see more of that, is that we are trying to actually put tools and methods in place in order to help our rural communities better understand different issues. And this is kind of what the whole program called Nevada Economic Assessment Project needs. Some of you commissioners may have heard about this, we did do, we have been working with NACO, did a presentation during the conference last week, but we've actually initiated this in about half the counties in the state so far, and that's a very good result. And what the whole underlying premise of this is, or what need is, is to develop and maintain an extensive data repository instead of analytical methods that are meaningful, consistent, verifiable. And what do I mean by that? Is that actually, we know there's a lot of data out there, there's that secondary data, census data, what have you, but it's spread out, and we actually want to bring those resources, those sources into one holding place. We wanna do consistency across county by county, and we wanna actually be very, make sure we put meaningful data, not only look at the current data, but also trend. I think it's very important from a larger standpoint to just to understand where you been, where you at, where you going. But we also are developing analytical tools. I know that some of the things I think you guys were just discussing, that impact, what impact the certain types of decisions have, whether that's a decision on public lands, the EIS, the Resource Management Plan, things like that. And that's what kind of actually got the toll on a lot of this on, is that we had a state grant initiative that actually was, there were a lot of questions in terms of the studies that were done, there was actually very broad, kind of broad statements that there were no economic, social economic impacts on the affected community, for what these decisions were being made, and we actually opposed that, and working with Governor Cannonball actually putting together this program, saying, you know what, we need to have tools and methods in place in order for our rural communities to actually be able to respond to that, to say that, yes, there is an economic impact, there is social economic impact on these decisions. So we're trying to put tools in place. And not only, not just put tools out there, I'm gonna also engage and educate communities. I mean, be part of the university extension, I mean, that's one of the main missions we have, is bring university resources to your community, but we're also doing that in partnership with the public land agencies, as well as state agencies, I mean, we have GOED involved, we have US Railroad Development, we have a lot of different agencies that actually have bought into this. I'm gonna let, like I say, as we're in an interesting time, we're gonna run through this, but I think it's an important thing, is for Joe, who actually works on this project, is, and kind of leads up the data side of this, to actually show, or to talk a little about the data, the data that we use and how you use, and then we'll go ahead and wrap this from there. Joe?
Thank you, brother. And the baseline reports and infographics that you have in front of you now, the basis of that is, of course, the data that we use within there. So it is of the utmost importance that we use, that we use the best data that we can. So for all data that we have within those reports, we look for five main qualities for those to be respected, verifiable, timely, historical, and consistent. So respected have to come from entities that we either know has a long history of providing accurate data, such as state and federal agencies, or something that we can check ourselves and make sure that it is accurate, if it's from a third-party source, verifiable. We always wanna make sure that we can ground truth in data, something that will look right to the people within the county. We are just going to blindly trust what the data says, we're gonna verify that data, make sure that it matches to what people think it should be, and figure out why there would be a discrepancy there. Timely, obviously, all data does take time to collect, such as with the census this year, obviously, that was a long process, and that data isn't available currently, it's gonna take a long time for it to actually be compiled into usable and easy-to-access data. So data within the report is gonna be 2017, 2018 as the most recent data, but that is something that we look for, we don't wanna use data that's from, you know, 2010 as the most recent data. If something's not more recent than that, then we're gonna try to find a different source that does have more recent data. Historical, when we talked about trend lines for data, and that's something that we think is even more important now in this time of COVID than ever before. We always want to see where an economy should be at, where populations should be at in the most, in the best circumstances and in the worst circumstances. So a lot of the data within the report starts in 2010, during the last recession, and then most of it will point upwards to the last few years, which have been very good for our state. Obviously, the data that we're gonna have for 2020, 2021 is gonna look different, especially economic data, has the high potential of looking worse, but with that historical trend data, we can see where it should be going back up to in the future years. And then the last quality that we look for is consistency, something where the data that we use for White Pine County, we wanna be able to use the same data for Eureka County, for Elko County. We wanna be able to compare apples to apples, so to speak, between counties, especially those neighboring counties, so that we can get an accurate representation of what those, what the data says between counties. But in an interesting time, let me give it back to Buddy to talk about a little bit more on the deliverables that we have.
Okay, thanks, Joe. And like we've kind of laid this out, there's kind of two different pillars of information that are being, and tools that we're developing, and the real, I guess, other piece of that is around the data repository. When we talk about that, we're talking about a whole set of different types of characteristics. And in the handout of the PowerPoint we gave, we have a graphic here where we're showing there's six different characteristics that we actually kind of focused in on, and that's the demographic characteristics of your county, your social characteristics, economic characteristics, NAC's top performing sectors, all of your key sectors that actually help drive your economy, lending use, physical characteristics of your county, and then the sixth one, which is actually, is one that we do in the community process, and that's community assets. This is why we bring in a specialist, Marlee Rigori, faculty member with Cooperative Extension, that actually specializes in group facilitation and processes, where she actually brings, we developed a questionnaire that we administered throughout the whole community, centered around community assets, and those being kind of people, places, play, values, economic groups, those are some of the areas that actually give a sense of what, how through the eyes of your residents, what is there and what is desired. It's helped in a lot of ways, actually, we, a couple sessions we've done, Kathy Messers has locked up, and guess what we're doing? I'm getting a better feel of exactly where I need to be working based off this. Good, great process. We actually have that scheduled in White Pine County this Friday, and this is something we had to adjust. We like doing this type of activity on, in person, but we've had to adjust that to the virtual environment. And it's actually, we've tested in two counties now, we did Eureka County on Monday, and we did Knight County about a month ago, and it's actually, I think we've got some process down. So we're excited about that, but it's already been conducted in about four other counties, so it's actually been, we do have some groundwork. Another very important tool is that. So it's actually been, we do have some groundwork. Another very important tool is that every county is also going to have an economic impact model. We're developing economic impact models for every county. They're in-plan based. Some of you may be familiar with the in-plan method, but that impact is what impact does a, a type of visitor have on your, on your county? What impact does it have? And also, it can be very beneficial in actually showing where maybe some of your gaps or deficiencies are, where you can improve. And that is, I can give you an example. Down in Lincoln County, we did a study down there, the new mountain biking trail, of what impact a 40-mile mountain bike would have. Obviously, they don't have a large economic base in Caliente, but we were able to actually work with the International Mountain Bike Association to understand what a profile might, a mountain biker looks like when they come to the community, and what they look for. So we basically kind of turned that into an entrepreneur-type workshop, where we had some business residents and entrepreneurs actually interested in what, what can we do to better serve this clientele when they come to town. I mean, some of the areas is bikes, bike repair shops, bike shops, cafes, or coffee shops, things of that sort. Some of those different types of things they look for when they can win a mountain bike. Because there has to be 30, 40,000 people who go access that trail, let's pull up an active one. And, you know, that, those are some opportunities. And after that, there has been some activity down there. My understanding, the bike shop did open up, repair shop, some of the retailers were activated from expansion plans, especially restaurants and things like that. A little bit of activity, but that's, that's how you can actually take an impact where you may not have the economic base, which you can actually use it to build your economic base. So that's what one of those tools have. The process, and like I said, we're in the middle of, as I, since the pandemic hit, most of our stuff is in, on the ground, in person. Normally, I'd be doing this presentation in person with you, but in order for us to keep this program moving, our goal is to have every county completed by the mid to end of 2021, is to, to continue to populate these reports. We have already populated the reports from White Pine. Those reports are those six different sections I just talked about. And I mean, our reports about 980, very detailed, but then we also have individual infographic back sheet, which is one of those chapters, a front-back, ready reference, and those are not been available on the webpage right now. And I will give you that address, and also in your handout. But there's one other caveat that we're working very hard, especially with our public land agencies. And then we want to do an assessment of some of the key industries, those industries that actually build and build, especially our rural communities. They center around agriculture, mining, and outdoor recreation. We hear a lot about outdoor recreation today, and we were doing our best to actually try to quantify, I want to understand what the baseline is. I think it's, it was Minister, understand what a, someone that coming to partake in a train activity there, what, what impact do they have on my community? That's the expenditures and all that, but actually to understand the, the volume that's there as well. So we're trying to break that down, and we're working very hard with every one of our outdoor recreation sectors in order to do that. And I'm not going to go into great detail there. I've got that in there, or in the presentation. But the deliverables, I've got just a, a front page of what each one of those reports was like. I also want to make it very clear is that this is not what I had classified as a hit-and-run type program. This is something that, we're already talking with Nenco, we're talking with the state. It's going to be a long-term, sustainable program where we continue to update and populate data, and actually use, we're supposed to multiple usable tools for you. I mean, we've got some counties that are using it for grant activities, they're using it for community planning, you know. I've got an expansion of a mine in Humboldt County. It's going to have so many people that are going to do my schools, my, all these different avenues that actually affect a community, and how can we better engage in public private partnership with those industries. But the webpage for which White Pine has its own NEAP page, is actually www extention.unr.edu/NEAP. And you can actually go on there, and your reports are up there at this time, and we'll keep adding to that base. But we wanted to make you guys, the county commissioners, aware of what, what we're doing, and how many, maybe help in that. I mean, there's some specialized committees that we can come in and help you with, as well, specialized questions. This is more of a broader, but I think the key point of all this is that we, as we, we kind of stressed when we were responding to the state drought EIS, is that we need to invest in a baseline, to understand that baseline, so we can actually be, be prepared to respond to any type of issue that they may be faced with, and do it in the, with not only just qualitative measures, but quantitative numbers as well. So with that, that's kind of an overview of the program, and I'd be more than happy to take any questions the commissioners may have.
And I did have one thing to add, if I may. I do want to thank a few of the community members who've been the great supporters of the NEAP so far. Caroline McIntosh, who spoke earlier today, I saw, thank you very much for all the help that you've given. I see Jeremy Drew and Mary Kerner both on the participant list here on Zoom as well. They both helped greatly. Thank you both very much. Kyle Ward-Patt and James Woolsey as well, who've been great supporters here for White Pine. So thank you all, and please, commissioners, if you have any questions for us.
Anyone got anything for Joe or Buddy?
Thank you guys for your work. It's really important and appreciated.
Absolutely.
Thank you. And we're sorry for the delay, but.
Can you get a copy?
Oh, that's fine. That's fine. That's all.
Okay. That being said, no questions. Thank you very, very much. We'll now go, we'll now recess the regular county commission meeting and go into the fire commission meeting, 9:15 by the way. Page two. First thing in the fire commission meeting is public comment. Is there any public comment in the fire commission meeting? George?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, I'm asking, passing, I'm asking again, has your fire chief had the chance to express the ingress egress on having to be accessed from Highway 93 near the New Holiday Inn?
I spoke to that. I gave you the answer to that. I gave you the letter from the state, so we'll not be discussing that.
Well, let's talk about the letter then.
I gave you the letter. That's all. That's what I have. Sorry. We're not going to discuss it. Once I answered, George, once I've answered your question, that's it. So go on to whatever else you have.
Do they have that issue?
Sorry. That's it. I answered it, and I'm not going to discuss it.
You didn't answer.
I'm sorry. There's the letter. That's the proper thing. It was approved, and we're not going to discuss it. Move on.
It doesn't meet the minimum city standards.
Move on.
So I have this time.
Thank you. Okay. The first item is discussion. It's an update on fire progress. Brett Nord, Fire Chief, and Pat Storey, U.D. Volunteer Fire Department.
Morning.
Good morning.
Good morning. Pat wasn't able to make it today. He's kind of tied up right now, so he didn't have anything new from the city side, pretty much status quo up there. Our site, projects at the stations, the Rouge project is all done. We've got some rain gutters left to go. Supposed to be probably handled or not before they hit the dam. Fond Fire Station, there are progress on getting that part of Montgale. I was down there yesterday, picking up an ambulance, and they're making good progress on it. Supposedly going to pay Saturday. So that should pretty well tie it up. McGill Restaurant, when I was over there Tuesday, Monday, they were in the process of drywall on, so they're moving along on that as well. New ambulance that we purchased that will go up to the city for the responding to the county incidents. Should be here today. Should be on its way right now. So we're working on getting that in service, hopefully within, by the weekend, have it in service. Volunteer Fire, they picked up handful moreover from McGill, coming for, out to Station One, to kind of respond to lack of law in McGill as well, with some equipment out there. Status quo, I think, is really on the upswing right now. We did get a $7,500 donation from the Robinson Mine up there, to buy turnout space, since we're getting so many people, it's hard to keep up with them. So that's going to be a great asset, and we really appreciate them bringing, with their generosity. So other than that, I don't think we've got anything else. Unless you've got questions.
Anyone?
Such good news, man.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for getting these projects done. Thank you, Brett.
Item two, discussion for possible action, the approval of the monthly financial reports for November 2020. Elizabeth?
They're in your backup. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them. Otherwise, I'd ask that they are approved. That's the matter.
Anyone got any questions? If not, move for motion to approve.
Motion approved.
Motion by Travis?
Second.
Second by Ian. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? Fashion animus. Item three, discussion for possible action, approval of budget transfers within and between functions or programs within a fund that do not increase the total appropriation of the fund or adjust or approve grant slash agency funds. Elizabeth, again?
Yeah, and again, it's in your backup. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer. Otherwise, I'd ask you, pretty much, for that.
Any questions? Move for motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Lloyd?
Second.
Second by Shane. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? Item four is discussion for possible action, the approval of the minutes from November 16, 2020, special fire commission meeting. Any additions, corrections, or fractions?
Just one. And it's throughout, and Nicole, it's throughout several of the events that were being used early, and that is that Pat Storey is not the volunteer fire chief. He's the city fire chief. They have a different gentleman who is the volunteer.
Okay.
Okay?
Edit?
Much to approve with correction?
Motion by Lloyd, approve with corrections. Second by Ian. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? Okay, last item in the fire commission meeting is public comment. Is there any public comment on the fire commission meeting? Hearing none and seeing none, we'll move forward. And it's the 9:30, so we are at the special board of the public health meeting. And Aaron, please come forward if this is your meeting here.
Great, thank you. We'll first call, we'll call the public health meeting to order, and look for any public comment.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, per Governor Sislax Directive 024, Section 5, which states individuals not exempted by this directive or guidance issued by the Nevada Health Response shall be required to cover their nose and mouth with a mask or face covering in a public space where the publicly owned or privately owned, where the public has access, by right or invitation expressed replied, whether by payment of money or not. Again, Commissioner Bullock has been tipping now 19 to 20 million a lease that I have attended and has not worn a mask. As a public official, we took a note that the person paid by our laws, he needs to comply or resign. The rest of the commission has the same obligation. And you are also required to ensure that one of your own is following the law, where that person needs to be reprimanded and brought into compliance. Again, do your job or resign. You guys are putting a lot of pressure on the business community downtown. When we ask a person to put on a mask when they don't come in, and they say, well, the commissioner's going to overturn that. You can't overturn it on a dime like that. Do your jobs. You have an obligation. Mr. Chairman, on your agenda item 2A1, you're going to consider the possible approval of resolution 20, excuse me, 2020-76. Again, this is not a good move. The numbers of COVID continue to go up in the county. Fully contrary to regulatory precautions based on science from health officials, they prove fail to our county. Uneducated beliefs need to be cautioned. Why do we have these people telling us what precautions we need to carry on, and then we ignore them? Thank you.
Are there any other public comments? Any public comments on the, okay, seeing none, we'll move on. Item one, discussion update on healthcare in White Pine County. troubling to me, we recently had an overdose, drug overdose of a former student of the high school. Makes me want to think that as a public health officer, I need to do a better job in high school and the elementary schools, middle schools. Talk about drug-free and education programs there. So I'll be, I'll be starting to stretch that way, and maybe do a little more, use the commission agree, of course, kind of take some direction and try to get into our schools and see what I can do to help prevent as much as possible this, the drug program or the preventive drug outbreak, or whatever you want to call it. I apologize. It is disappointing. I noticed in the police water, several students have been busted with controlled substances, and it's just kind of disheartening. So I feel like that's under the purview of the public health office, and try to help them grow at schools. So I'll be working with them. As far as public outreach programs, want to probably start.